Sound like my daughter. Good evening, everybody. Thank y'all for being here. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Ms. Stone, can I get a roll call, please? Here?
Here.
Mr. Bloodsworth?
Here.
Commissioner Howell is absent. Commissioner White.
Here.
I'm very happy to invite up Pastor Tim Foltz from Mount Pleasant Baptist Church to do our invocation tonight, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we all please stand?
So I have a few words I'd like to share. In three weeks from tonight, or today, is National Day of Prayer. And last year, we approved a resolution to participate in the National Day of Prayer. And this coming year, this year, we're gonna be at the Civic Center at noon, and we're inviting everybody to be a part of that. So we wanna remind everybody about that, and invite everybody, and encourage everybody to participate. Okay? I do have a passage of scripture I'd like to read, and then I'll have a word of prayer. "Therefore I exhort you, first of all, that supplication, prayers, intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and reverence; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of our Savior, who desires all men to be saved and to come into the knowledge of the truth; for there is one God and one mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus, who gives himself a ransom for all. To be testified in due time, for which I was appointed a preacher and an apostle, I am speaking the truth in Christ and not lying, a teacher of the Gentiles in faith and truth." Let's pray together. Father, in the name of Jesus, we bow before you this evening. We realize that this is a important meeting, and Lord, we want your blessings on this meeting. We pray for these individuals that have been put in positions of authority, and we lift them up and entrust them into your care. And we pray that you'll provide the wisdom they need to make the decisions that are best for this community and pleasing in your sight. We pray for everybody that's here this evening. We believe that we're here by the providential hand of God. And Lord, we ask that as we involve ourselves in this community, that we would truly bring glory and honor to you. So we ask your blessings on this time, and may we be good stewards, and Lord, may we fulfill the plans and purposes you have for us. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Amen.
Please do the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do have a gift for each one of y'all.
Please.
This coming Sunday is Palm Sunday, which commemorates the last week of Jesus' life here on earth before he died on the cross. And so I put together a little booklet that kinda gives you a rundown of the things that went, he went through that last week of his life here on earth. We call it Passion Week. So Sunday will be the day of triumph. He goes into Jerusalem on a donkey, and they say, "Hosanna, Hosanna, blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord." Monday is the day of authority. Tuesday is the day of controversy. Wednesday is the day of silence. Thursday is the day of preparation. That's when he institutes the Lord's Supper, washes the disciples' feet. Friday is the day of crucifixion. Saturday is the day of entombment. And then obviously, the following Sunday is the day of resurrection. And we celebrate that, so I just give that as an encouraging word to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the agenda, but we also need to add a new item on, under New Business. It'll be listed as Item 4, Discuss/Consider and Act on the Extension Amendment to the Priest Theater Agreement with the State.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda with adding the one item.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on now to the approval of the Consent Agenda, minutes of the March 27, 2025 Commission Meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda from the March 27 Commission Meeting.
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Onto the fun stuff. Special presentations. First, we would like to, City of High Springs would like to recognize the Santa Fe High School Winter Guard season.
Mr. Mayor, it is my absolute honor and privilege to present to you the folks that put together an amazing season for Winter Guard. I don't know, you know, we have a marching band season where you've got musicians in the guard together, and they compete in the fall. And then in the spring, the musicians move over to concert season, and the guard folks move over to Winter Guard season. And my very small involvement with Winter Guard, I was absolutely blown away at every competition. The entire gymnasium, the entire attendance is completely supportive of every competitor that's there. It's very, very unique and really, really uplifting. So I was hoping that maybe their coach Jenny Smith would come up and tell us a little bit about their season, and then we get to show you all their show.
Yeah. Oh, yes, ma'am. It's your time to shine.
Oh, yay. So we actually, for winter season, a lot of the band kids will come over and join us. So if you're a band kid who was on Winter Guard, can you stand up real quick? Yep, so we have quite a bit that come over for winter season and join us and compete with us on guard, so they're multi-talented. We had eighteen kids this year. We started in our class, which was called Regional A, which is kinda like your first introductory, introduction class. In mid-season, they had achieved all the skills necessary and were promoted up to a higher class. So we were promoted to AAA. From that point on, we had achieved what our goal was for this season, so my advice to them was, let's have fun and see where we end up. And so we did just that, and actually ended up bringing home a bronze medal in the higher class. So they all worked very hard. They put in countless hours of practice, both at school, at home, weekends to go to competitions. And I think we had a pretty fun season, so that's kind of my goal, and then our other staff members, Kennedy and Riley. Our main goal is to teach them something, as well as have fun while doing it. We don't wanna put too much pressure on them, but, you know, make sure they have fun and wanna be there. So I think I can say that most of them wanted to be there. So I think, are you gonna show the run?
Yes, we've got, we've got your show. We should also point out that Mr. Messina, your band director, and Mr. Kelly Armstrong, your principal, is here to support your students. And we're so grateful for you being here.
So our show was called Your Icarus, so it's a nod to Icarus. It's not telling the Icarus story, but this is what we came up with.
We'd like to present Santa Fe High School Color Guard.
Couple, couple days, like maybe a day.
Yeah, two days. We try to get put out in some of our show for January for what's called premiere, which is like the shell of your show, basically. And then for each competition, you just keep kinda adding until champs, you basically have to finish product, so.
Wow.
Just when it's over and you perfected it, it's done.
I have a question for those of you on sabers and rifles. Do you guys, like, when you're in your backyards, do you have fences where your neighbors are like, what the heck are they doing? Where they're just seeing like a saber spinning in the air?
Many of them are in the middle of the road. Video assignments that I watch.
That'll keep the neighbors away. That'd work.
That was fantastic.
That's amazing. We have, uh... We would like to give your certificate out. This is a Certificate of Recognition. The following award is given to the Santa Fe High School Winter Guard. This certificate is in recognition of Santa Fe High School Winter Guard in their outstanding Winter Guard season, and placing as Bronze Medalist in the FFCC Championships.
Outstanding.
Thank you guys so much. This is our leadership from this season, so.
That's fantastic. Thank you all. Just another great representation of what the kids in this community are all about and what they can do. So I mean, that's really, it's a testament to you, but it's also a testament to your parents. I know it's not easy getting kids all around, so parents, thank you as well. Let's give a round of hand to the parents. I just love the fact that High Springs just keeps winning things. When they said we were too small and everybody else spends more money, High Springs always seems to just do a little better than they do. So I'm not sad about that. Well, thank y'all for coming. Of course. And we get another one. We get to recognize the local Alachua County High School Honor Band Participants.
Mr. Mayor, when I had to scoot out early at the last meeting, it was to go and watch these amazing musicians perform. I've been a band mom for a couple few years now, and I can tell you that I've seen concerts at the all-state level, at the tri-state level, and at the all-county level. And the Alachua County, all-county, middle school and high school honor bands are amazing. The music that they, you'd never know that the high school was fourteen to eighteen-year-old the way they played. And they usually take about a hundred students per year. And as Alachua County goes, you know, Gainesville is pretty much Alachua County when it comes to a lot of things. But we had amazing representation from the Alachua, High Springs, and Newberry parts of the world, and we wanted to recognize those students. Some of them could not be here tonight. Tonight is the High Springs Community School and Oakview Middle School Band's MPA Night. So one of our local, local kids is with her sister because it's her sister's MPA. And I would just like to introduce to you some of the kids. Lacey Kellogg, who is with her sister right now at MPA. She is from High Springs, and she played flute and piccolo, and is one of Gainesville High School's drum majors. Miley Demko, also on flute, who is not here because she's still playing tennis for, for Newberry. She's one of the Newberry kids, and she's been, she's a sophomore. And then we have on Clarinette from Newberry High School, the very lovely Althea Verdote, who is here. Althea is a senior, and I am going to miss her something awful when she graduates. She is also Newberry High School's drum major and an all-around amazing girl. We also had, from Santa Fe High School, Imani Smith, who is not here. She had to work tonight. She played tuba, and she is also their drum major. And we have Leo Miller, who is here from High Springs, on trumpet from Santa Fe High School. And it should be mentioned that there were sixteen trumpets in the honor band, and Leo Miller sits first chair. I can tell you that, that, that group of trumpets was led by a professional trumpet player. Unbelievable. And there were also two French horn players from Newberry High School. Gavin Parker, who is not here because he has a lacrosse match tonight. And my favorite French horn player, Anna White. So there were eight of them.
That's the chair of our mayor's youth council.
They were incredible. And we have one of their, one of their performances to show you. It was the last piece they performed, and it was called Ride. And you can just listen. It's just amazing. She plays trombone, and she lives in Newberry, and she goes to Gainesville High School. There were only nine trombones that made it into this band, and she's one of them. And it should also be noted that she doesn't play trombone in the marching season. So she is a girl boss of two instruments, so.
Good for her.
You guys did an amazing job. I'm so glad that you were able to come. And Angela has some...
Got some hardware for y'all as well. Certificate of Recognition. The following award is given to the Alachua County High School Honor Band. This certificate is awarded in recognition of the exceptional achievement of the local High Springs, Newberry, and Alachua band students who had the honor of serving in the Alachua County All County, I'm sorry, the Alachua All County High School Honor Band. Their dedication, hard work, and immense talent have earned them this distinguished accomplishment. We are proud to celebrate these outstanding young individuals for their commitment to excellence in music. We sure can. If, if both sets would like to come up, we'd love, as a commission, to get a picture with you guys, so that we can brag about y'all on the internet.
You gonna do all at the same time, or one and one?
Let's do all at the same time.
All at the same time. All right, so if all you guys move up, somebody might just bounce down.
It's difficult.
The interesting thing is that if you notice, most of these kids do multiple things, plus excel in the classroom, which is amazing in itself, since I was really only ever good at none of those things. So it just shows you how, how well our children are doing in this community. Y'all act like y'all like each other. Y'all just spent six months together.
Big smile. One, two, three. All right. We're good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you guys so much.
All those things. Look at that. Look, look at that. Tell Greg I said hi.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Armstrong. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Armstrong. I didn't know who you were. You know my wife, so I didn't know you.
Everybody knows your wife.
I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Messina.
Thank you.
It's good to meet you anyway.
Mr. Armstrong, I was at Glen Springs today.
Oh, you're an awesome parent.
They still talk about you. I told him you haven't changed a bit. You're still the first one to hold open the door, talk to the kids, and then pick up the stuff.
That's all true.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is one of the best principles in Alachua County, period. All right, how do we start a meeting? Okay, we'll go into unfinished business, which we have done. And we will move into citizen requests and comments for issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record, and limit comments to five minutes. And as we've been doing, we'll hold back all commissioner responses until the end.
Good evening. How was everybody tonight?
Fantastic.
I actually have only just a couple of things to say tonight. I wanna remind everyone that it's better to build up than to tear down. I want to remind everybody, the last time I came up and spoke, I, I spoke of the fact that I've been here doing community service in this city for fifteen years. I spoke of the fact that I've been here doing community service in this city for fifteen years. And I don't want to have enemies with anyone. But every time, every year that comes along, or every season, we seem to be coming up with new rules in the city, we have new people that come in, city manager's new. You know, Bruce Gillingham was always supportive and helped us get things done in a harmonious way. And I would like to see the city continue to work that way. We all have jobs, too, outside of taking the time to come and speak, we all, and do the community service things that we do. I commute to Green Coast Springs every day, three hours' travel, every day. I keep up with the Lions Club, I'm not here as a Lions Club, I'm here as Lanier Smith tonight. But there's only so much we can do with the right mind, and a lot less we can do under stress. And when this commission, city manager, city employees, staff make decisions, keep in mind that we're all stressed, we're trying to do what's best for the city. I feel like some things shouldn't become personal. I'm not going to make them personal, they shouldn't be personal. I'm not going to mention anything specific, but I am working my butt off to get some things done here in town on an event that's coming up pretty soon. And we continue to have roadblocks. And some of those roadblocks are caused by new policies that are set that we weren't used to before. So, please. We want to work well with everybody, but it's starting to take its toll. When you take the spirit out of the events, it's a detrimental effect. Thank you very much for your time, have a good evening.
David Lynch, L-I-N-C-H. Something terrible is happening in High Springs. Small children, seven, eight, nine years old, are riding electric scooters at high speeds. And when I pick up my daughter at school, I see them riding on the sidewalk with the other children that are walking. And this is dangerous, someone is going to get hurt or get killed. And the city commissioner and the city manager is responsible for the safety and well-being of each person that lives in High Springs. And I urge you to think about this, should a small child be riding an electric scooter at a high rate of speed? Moving on to another subject. Our concrete streets. You paved over one of them right over here. Our beautiful concrete streets that are unique, historical, and beautiful. The streets that I walked on as a child. I beg the city manager and I beg the commissioners not to pave over our concrete streets. Moving on to another subject. Three words, High Springs Brewing. I urge the commissioners and the city managers to think about, do they want the name of their city associated with the product that kills seven thousand people each day?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It was great seeing all the talent that High Springs students have to offer. My name is Anissa Isaac. I work with an organization called Teens Work Alachua. We're a mission program from Goodwill Industries of North Florida, and we are also funded by the Children's Trust of Alachua County. And what we do is we provide a summer enrichment program for teenagers between the ages of fourteen and eighteen. So, it was great seeing so many students that fit within that population. And what we do is we connect students all within Alachua County with businesses all within Alachua County to provide them with mostly their first work experiences. So, we have a team of job coaches that is assigned to each student and each business to kind of be a liaison for them during the summer and ensure that they have a great summer experience. We also provide financial literacy training, job training for students as well. We have a student orientation that will be happening in June for students. Our applications, we've received around seven hundred or so already. However, we really are trying to reach out to our outlying areas in High Springs specifically. So if we do have any High Springs students that are interested, we will prioritize our applications and try to make sure that they get through our application process, as well as High Springs businesses as well. We just signed up the Florida Creamery, that's around the road. And we worked with High Springs Parks and Rec in summer 2023. So we're trying to sign on as many High Springs businesses and bring on as many High Springs students as we can. I do have some flyers here, I don't know if this is the time to offer this. This green one is for our student application, and this blue one is for any interested businesses within High Springs. Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, commissioners, do we have any responses?
I do have a question with the last one, because I was approached at a barber shop about Teen Works. And I was trying to see, can Parks and Recs do that again for Teen Works this year?
I will talk to Jen, I don't see any reason why we can't, I'm not overly familiar with the program, but, and I wasn't here in 2023, but we could take a look. Do you got our Park and Rec directors' contact info?
I don't know if we have the most updated information.
Okay, we'll make sure, great, we'll get that for you, and then we'll get ahold of Jen, we'll see what we can do.
And the last question I have, you might want to keep it on. With Lanier's comment, I wanted to know... So I know we have a new permit process where it's like, you can only get a permit for an event, what is it, three months in events?
Ashley Malden takes care of the permits, I'm not sure what the timeframe is, but they're supposed to be submitted a certain amount of time.
Yeah, it's not like how it used to be, where it was like, when the event is over, Pioneer Day is over, they used to submit a event permit for the next year, but you can't do that anymore. Is there a reason why we went to that?
That must have changed before I got here.
It did, I remember that changing under the previous city manager, she stopped that, I don't know why, though.
Yeah, is that something we can look into, because I feel like that is one of the biggest frustrations for non-profit organizations, they need their calendar done before the end of the year. So the fact that they can't start their calendar till the beginning of the next year, they're already behind the ball. They need their calendar done and then set before the new year even gets here.
I don't see any reason why we can't go back. Let me talk it over with Ashley, make sure, she's the one that takes care of it, I don't see any, I don't see her really having any problem with it, but let me talk to her just to make sure, but if there's no issues, yeah, I don't see why we can't go back to that.
Yes, I feel like that'd help with the frustration between...
Is that what his big issue is?
That's what I was going to ask, is that what the first gentleman's issue, elaborate on it, yeah.
I don't know what he was talking about.
I mean, I can't speak for him, but I can speak, because I'm a part of the chamber. One of the frustration issues that I can say for me personally is that everybody gets amnesia every year, as if they don't know what we're doing. And so it's like we're going back over, over, and over stuff that everybody does every year. And so it's like, okay, we did this last year, why is everybody acting like we never did these events before? So that's why I was saying, at least if the permit process was easier, new things that come along can be discussed before the new year.
Sure, I'll talk to Ashley, and if there's no issue, and if there is an issue, I'll let you know what it is. But I don't see any reason why we can't go back to a longer period.
Was there other issues that...
It sounded like there's a lot of stuff, I plan on reaching out to Lanier, just to kind of see what's going on, and just, you know, hear him out, because I don't want, I know there was, he was very upset with the way we had to handle Pioneer Days and the, of the fire department, I knew he was upset with that. He made that very clear in the last meeting that he got up and spoke at, but I thought we had come to a...
Yeah, he had problems with the car show.
Did he have problems with his car show? We will, yeah, we'll, we'll reach out to him, we'll figure it out. We want, we want good working relationships, like every one of us has said, so that's not a...
And my thing is, we've heard this song and dance several times. Where past administration overlooking things, and now we're trying to
Hold it accountable.
Hold it accountable, and people are not used to that. And now we're up here trying to do right, and we're being looked at as a negative way, but yet it's been on the books, so to speak, which is what should have been happening. And now we're trying to correct a wrong, that don't mean it was right, but...
Right, it might be more difficult trying to do things the right way, sometimes it is a little bit more difficult. But we've all stuck with, I mean, I think our commission's been pretty adamant about keeping things, making things extremely consistent. That way there's no, you don't get something because you're friends with somebody or anything, we want to be consistent across the board.
We're not allowing somebody to do it, and then others not.
Yeah, we want to be fair and consistent across the board with this.
But like I said, I think with the permit process, at least looking at that, that'll at least start the conversation to make things easier for every organization. Because like I said, I know that that is one challenge for every organization I have ever talked to here in High Springs, is that they have to wait until the same year that they have an event, and that's pretty hard. Because even at church, you know, if you do, if you're used to doing church calendar, you do church calendar before the new year, you do it the year before, so...
There must be a reason why they went back, I remember us talking about it, but I don't remember the context.
Angela, do you remember any reason why they changed it? Listen, alright.
I remember what Ashley, I remember what Ashley said, if we want to know. I remember what she said, I don't know if this was the actual reason, but I remember what she told me. She said that she wanted to give other people opportunities to do events the same time that other people are doing them, even though these events are traditional, you know, High Springs is used to Pioneer Day, used to Tree Lighter. So giving other people opportunities to do events on the same day as traditional events, I just feel like that was a slap in the face to those organizations that's been doing them all this time.
So we will definitely look at it, and we'll figure it out.
And I'll reach out to Lanier, if there's more to it than that, then I'll have him get with you, and just... If people are frustrated, listen, we want you to talk to us, so, I think we're all pretty reachable. That's right.
And I think it's also relevant to acknowledge that we've got a lot of new staff, different folks, and just because, you know, the previous administration did things one way, doesn't make it wrong, it just made it different. And this is the way we're doing it now, so this is the course we'll chart, so...
Mr. Lynch, I will tell you, I don't know if there's anything we can do about those electric scooters. Chief, are you aware of anything? I mean, that's kind of like a new thing, it's before the, it's kind of, we're dealing with it in other places.
Yeah, I don't think there's much, I know the legislator would look at laws on it, and it's on the state highway, but we can always try to be cognizant of it and try to, you know, teach safety to kids, that's about all I can do.
Absolutely, because you're right, I see them coming out of the school, Mr. Lynch, and they are, they are moving at a good, at a good pace down that sidewalk, and if they clipped a little kindergarten or something, that would be a problem. So I agree with you on that, it's definitely, they're definitely faster than when I bought my kids the ones that only went like four miles an hour. Yeah, well, I had the foot one when I was growing up. Alright, we will move on to new business. New business item one, discuss, consider, and act on established alternate dates for the September, November, and December city commission meetings, and setting the dates for the budget workshops.
So, we have certain meetings we have to hold at certain times for the budget process, that's why you have the alternate dates. Also during one-on-ones, talking to a couple commissioners. It was expressed that while you guys approve the budget, and we do the budget workshops and whatnot, it's too much information for you guys to learn all at once, and a couple of commissioners don't really understand the budget enough to cast a vote. So talking with Diane, we decided we'll get ahead of it, and we're going to do multiple optional workshops. You don't have to be there, but we're going to break up some of the departments and do little mini workshops. We will still do the full-blown ones, like as required. But to help you guys understand what it is you're looking at, what it is you're approving, we're going to do, I think there's six of them, six mini workshops, break it up by department. However, we are not, nowhere near ready to present real numbers to you. So when you get these workshops, like at the next meeting, it will be the budget that you guys have already approved, but it will show you, we'll go down and explain what it is you're looking at, and now get your mind going. So when we get the next, when we get what we're going to get for revenue, we start getting real numbers together for the budget, you'll have a better understanding of what you're looking at, it's more of an education piece. And it's good to understand what those numbers mean, instead of just looking at it and saying, do we have enough revenue to cover the expenses? You should really understand what's in there. So those are the dates that are proposed. I was going to bring it up during my manager's comments, but I am out the next meeting, which will be the first budget workshop. I appointed Diane as the acting city manager, because we're going to have the first workshop. Let her run the whole thing, she knows the numbers better than anybody, so... We're going to keep, try to keep the agenda light for you guys with the next one, and go through this first easy set of department budgets.
Okay, I like it, I appreciate it, too, I really, really do.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Diane about ad valorem tax revenue. I got, or we got our property tax bill last year. Paid it, November thirtieth, the last day I could pay the least amount. And then we got, oh, oops, a revised bill, you owe twice as much as you've already paid, here's a correction. Have you seen that kind of wiggling around in terms of what you can expect? And if that's your reality, you know, we're estimating we're getting this much tax revenue, oh, but then they said, well, maybe not. How are we supposed to nail down a budget?
This is the first year that I've heard from any residents that they were getting those kinds of letters. Just so other people know, that strictly is property appraiser's office, tax collector. We don't, we just tell them what our millage rate is, and they apply it. So, I don't know what was behind that, why that happened. A lot of people had big swings in their values this year, I don't know. Typically, when we get, we get a preliminary number on June first, based on the tax roll with our millage, what the property appraisers consider as will be our ad valorem. And that June first number is usually pretty solid, you know, it's probably ninety, ninety-five percent. In, you know, ten years on, looking at them, I haven't seen any major, major changes. There's some things, you know, we've talked about this before, that people don't always realize, you know, when there's new construction, or like the solar plant, until something's on the tax rolls on January first, you're not going to get it that fall. So anything that's built during the year right now, we're not going to see the revenue in the fall. So, sometimes looking around makes us very excited and hopeful, and we're not quite there yet. But it is challenging, but once we get those June numbers, they're pretty solid. There's always going to be delinquent taxpayers, there's going to be people that move, leave, whatever, and so sometimes there's gaps. But like so far, looking at it, we'll have the majority, we have most of our ad valormen right now. We're coming in a little under what we expected, but it does dribble in the next few months, so...
So your routine is that you expect to get a solid number June first, so whatever it is that's been going on with them this year, that's not necessarily going to put a hitch in your giddy up in terms of your being able to be prepared?
It shouldn't.
Okay.
It shouldn't.
I wasn't so happy.
No, I wasn't either.
Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this calendar and the presented dates.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, do we have any citizen comment? We do not. It's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Item two, we're going to discuss, consider, and act on temporarily suspending the alcohol consumption ordinance for the Hot Rodding for Heroes One Day Event.
So the Hot Rod for Hero event, it's held right here over in front of the brewery. So the Hot Rod for Hero event, it's held right, right here over in front of the brewery and they, each year they ask, cause they, you can't, they have a sign at the end of the brewery because of our ordinance that they can't take the alcohol past that sign, but you won't be able to go look at the cars and walk around. So we suspend the ordinance for, for them to be able to go look at the cars and walk around. It's just in the closed off area. Um, that's what's in front of you.
And having these roads closed isn't going to impact businesses, accessibility to businesses, because anybody who's along these roads are going to be closed or, you know, I mean, it's like you can't, not that you can't get your haircut in the back here because they'll be closed. So it's not going to have any kind of negative impact, I wouldn't think for. Mr. Mayor, the only question I had for the city manager was what does Chief Shepherd think? And if Chief Shepherd's good.
He was there last year. I think we had a good time, didn't we?
We don't have any objections to it. We don't usually have any problems. We asked that the, uh, it be covered cups and that it be limited to that locality. So we have no objections from the staff.
I actually had the honor of judging the car show for them last year and it was, it was awesome because they do so much good for, retired and injured fallen soldiers and whatnot. And if anybody knows the Jacobsons, that's a, a proud family of Marines that goes back generations and generations. So this is exactly what the kind of thing we want and love having here in High Springs. So I'm, I'm all for supporting them. They do a absolutely great thing for, for our soldiers. They think a lot of cool cars that come out. And who doesn't love cars?
Mr. Mayor, since, uh, Chief Shepherd is good, I make a motion that we approve the permit application as presented, sir.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. New business item three. Discussion on changing city attorney services to a different attorney within the same firm.
Mr. Walker, this is a question for you, since you're the sitting city attorney. You are listed as our charter officer, not your firm, correct?
That is correct.
So would there be? If, if we were able to switch to Mr. Martin, which is, is who I would, I would like to consider. I would love Danielle, but she doesn't live in Florida and I'm concerned that you're very busy. And I would just like to discuss the possibility of how that would happen if the commission were agreeable. That way the contract stays with your firm. Um, and I, I, I know that when I have questions, I routinely reach out to Danielle. I don't, and that's not because I reach out to you and you don't answer. I just usually don't reach out to you because I, Danielle's pretty responsive. Not that you wouldn't be too, but I don't know that that would necessarily change. You know, I mean, she's, she's a terrific asset. But Mr. Martin is, he's, he's a High Springs guy and, uh, you know, with his experience with Congressman Yoho in DC, I think he brings a lot of experience. And I ju, I don't know the logistics of that and whether or not that's something the commission would be willing to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, if, if you'd like, I can speak to that. Um, your charter says that it'll be an individual. It doesn't talk about a law firm. So I think in keeping with the charter, it needs to be at least an individual. Uh, the, the charter also does say the city attorney or designee. And certainly I agree with your assessment about Danielle. I think she's beyond her years in practice of law. She's come along at a tremendous rate. And that's not to say some of the other employees that we have, um, uh, younger attorneys, uh, particularly the female attorneys. The profession seems to be going in that direction right now, uh, from a very male-oriented and dominated profession to a female-oriented and dominated profession. So some of the younger female lawyers that we have in our group are, are just, in my opinion, dynamos. If you'd asked me this question a year ago, I, I would have said Danielle's not ready for that. But I do think at this stage in her career, she is, she is capable of handling more and more of your work. And certainly I want to make you all happy with our services and my objective is that our law firm have a very long-term relationship. We already have a long-term relationship. We want it to maintain and be longer. But the charter says the city attorney or designee, and what I would like to do with you all's permission is to have Danielle here. She's in Florida every month. Um, no secret, she lives in Boston. She did live in DC. It worked out very well for our firm with her being a law clerk because of Zoom. If there's anything good that came from Zoom, it was, or from COVID, it was the Zoom process and the courts pivoted pretty quickly. And I said, Danielle, I can, I can walk down the hall and talk to you, or I can click you up on the Zoom and it works famously well. And so she comes down here once a month and, and, uh, participates in trials, depositions, mediations, all that sort of thing, and the cases that are assigned to her. And, and it's no secret. She is very, very responsive and I'm very proud of her for that reason. And, uh, for example, right now she's working on a question that Commissioner Miller had asked of, you know, what about the canoe outpost? And she's working on a written response to that. By the way, you can sell it. It's subject to the conservation easement, but we're going to have the documents and pack it together so that you can look at that. And that certainly affects the marketability of the canoe outpost because of the conservation easement, but if you recollect, we received some money from the conservation trust to purchase that property. So that, that runs with the land and, and it may affect your marketability to how that's sold and it can't be divided and, and it has certain restrictions. So, but we'll have that in writing and Danielle is working on that. So my plan is to designate her to assist. I, for reasons that we don't need to go into, uh, I'm the city attorney, but I have the ability to designate. And I think she can be here at least one meeting per month and we'll see how that works and then see how that shakes out. But, but, um, yes, I think we can accommodate what you're seeking. And now that shifts her off of one of the other cities, which when she's down here, she's been covering another city. Uh, one of our sister cities has had some really difficult problems, um, over the last about year, but I think we're coming through a lot of those problems. And so we can kind of shift the manpower around and maybe achieve what it is that you're asking. So I think we can accommodate that. Uh, maybe address that in six months again, see how it's working. And then if it, if you're happy with it, then, then, uh, then certainly our law firm's happy with it. But, you know, I saw this on the agenda and tried to find out what we're talking about here and, and I think, um, probably your preference is to get the lady that's doing a lot of the work, which is Danielle.
She's fantastic, but Clay is also, he, he's been here at meetings before and he does a tremendous job. And, and just from a personal perspective, I think Clay kind of gets High Springs. That's why, that's kind of why I'm, I'm drawn to Mr. Martin, but Danielle is an absolute rock star. And she has that really good balance of, I'll call her and ask her a question and she'll say, well, you know, Madam Commissioner, if she tries to dance around it, or she'll just, she'll answer me very plainly and it's very much appreciated. So she does a great job.
My suggestion is let's try that for a little bit and see how that works. And if you're satisfied with it, we'll continue with it. If you want to make a further change, then we'll look at making a further change.
I just want to make sure since, you know, this is only my, going in my second year here, that High Springs is being taken care of, so to speak. I mean, it's our little old town. I know we don't have a lot to keep somebody permanently here on staff, but just so that High Springs is being well taken care of. I know you, you have definitely, definitely a lot more cities to, to control and take care of. So I just want to make sure we are getting the respect that we have here.
Well, and I think that's an excellent point, Mr. Mayor. Um, there's some attorneys that I, I'm not ready to put in this slot. You're a small city, but you kind of have some big problems along the way. And that's not to say that you're of your own making. It's other problems kind of present to you. And so I don't anticipate going away, uh, from your representation. And there's some things that I think, you know, I'll have input on without question. And, and having the 40 years of experience, there's a lot of things that I've seen before, but there's some things that have happened just very recently that I haven't seen before. And, uh, and so, you know, I get surprised by some things that, and, and by the way, in that thing, you probably know what I'm talking about. And your management staff handled it, I think extremely, extremely well and saved the city from maybe getting in some even bigger problems. But I don't plan to go away. I think just maybe handling the management of it a little differently. And I'm certainly open always to what I consider to be constructive criticism. You know, that critique and having this dialogue, I think is, is a good thing. I don't ever think of it as a bad thing. But yes, that's something I think is, uh, at the forefront. You have to have somebody in the seat that has some experience from the municipal law standpoint, in my view.
And I've, I've heard some, some staff talking about not getting responses quicker or quick enough. So I was just wondering, is it because you're handling so many municipalities, many cities, that it takes a little while to get back? Depending on what the severity of the issue is?
I, I'm, myself, I'm not hearing that. In fact, I hear the opposite that, you know, generally speaking, it goes through Danielle and Danielle is extremely responsive. Um, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
There is a tool that we have when, in our other cities that in my view would be good to implement. And certainly we talked to your manager about this and it's called the Jot Form System. And, and I don't know, I think we talked to your prior city manager. I don't know that we talked to Jeremy about it. And basically that goes into our system. It's assigned to an attorney. It gives a date as when the task is assigned. And then it then tells us how long it's been sitting. Is it a high priority thing? Is it, you know, middle priority? Where, where does it sit? And then we can evaluate if, you know, when it's checked off the list. The benefit of the Jot Form System, which we run in other cities, is that you can look then, you could say, what has our performance been? And it's kind of hard to say, well, you know, I think we did okay. And, and, but, but if it's an objective evaluation and you say, you know, we did 220 questions off the Jot Form, you know, then you can evaluate in an objective basis and say, well, you know, they've been pretty damn responsive and it took them a little time to do this particular project. Maybe using the canoe outpost is, you know, it's a complex thing. We had to put the documents together. And I want to have one-stop shop for you to say, hey, this is, this is our answer. This is written opinion. It's not something just off the cuff as to. Because I think that's a pretty important question coming down the pike. But it's all, it's all, um, collated into this system. And then you have a, a way of saying, well, they, they have been responsive. As a matter of fact, I didn't realize we did that much work with your law firm over the course of the year and that's pretty good. Now, maybe Jeremy likes that, maybe he doesn't like it. That's really up to Jeremy to implement that system. But, but I like the system for exactly the reasons you said, because then you have something that it's not, it's, it's, um, it gives you some real data, I believe.
Is it something that we as commissioners are allowed to see and know what y'all are working on and what progression, how it's moving? Do we get that opportunity or is it, we have to request or y'all able to?
On the Jot Form System, it's just, you just have it. Everybody has access to it.
And we don't participate in that right now. Is that what you're saying?
You're not doing it right now, but I'm happy to, you know, integrate with, with your management and say, and, and it's not just for staff. If you as commissioners say, hey, I want you to research something, Scott, Danielle, whoever in our law firm, and we, you know, it can be used by you guys too. It's not just, uh, it's not just your staff.
I know I've never contacted y'all, but I was just curious to know what you're working on behind the scenes that maybe I'm not even aware of. Especially the canoe outpost. That's awesome to hear that we got some news on that as well. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Walker, I have a question about the Jot Form. That obviously would be subject to public record.
It is.
So if there's a public record request, Angela, guess what would be her mechanism for getting that information?
You have it on your system, just like we have it on our system. So it's a computerized program.
Okay.
And it basically, it, it's a glorified Excel spreadsheet is really what it is. Here's the date that it came in. Here's the assignment. Here's the attorney that's handling it. And then there's a section over here that says what the status of it is.
Okay.
It's been cleared or, or not.
So I feel like the question that we just keep dancing around is, is Mr. Clay an option?
Right now he's got Lake City and he's full on in Lake City. So I don't really think internally that, that is a, I don't think that's going to work, to be totally honest with you. Not right now.
I'm good. I'm good with, uh, with Danielle coming in for a meeting. There's nothing wrong with trying something new.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we'll implement it and let's assess it in six months. And if you guys are happy with it, we'll keep going with it. If you say, no, we got to make some further changes, then we'll do it. And, and as a subpart, we'll talk to Jeremy about the Jot Form System. And I don't think it's been brought up. I think it was under your prior manager and for whatever reason, I don't, I'm, I'm not really sure. It just never got implemented. So let's, let's talk about that too.
Yeah. Can, things can always get better.
Agreed.
Good.
It's, it's up to the commission.
I was going to open it up here and say, I was making sure we didn't have any other commissioners and wanted to say something. Ms. Evans, come on down. Opening it up to citizen comments.
Sounds like you're starting to make a decision when everybody hasn't had a chance to talk.
Well, this was just a discussion, so on the agenda, so we're not making any crazy, you know, decisions yet.
Alrighty. The conversation regarding constructive criticism is getting old. I think that there should be an evaluation for everyone. And I think that the, uh, seven years that I've been following very closely are local city politics. I've got the agendas. I've got my notes. I've got all this stuff. Seven years of unresponsiveness that you mentioned has, is documented going with this law firm. I was disappointed to see on our agenda tonight that there wasn't an option of going with a totally different law firm. I think that we have been paying for good service and we have not been receiving it. I have many things I could talk about with the documents reviewed, whether it's the Duke contract that we never got our extra revenue processed, um, the garbage disposal thing, even letting Bridlewood go through at the beginning, the repeated requests for solid mural ordinances, conflicts of interest shown. You asked if, if, if you can call the office. Do you know within two, two days, Ross Ambrose made calls to the office and we were billed as a city $18,000 from Mr. Walker's firm so that Ross Ambrose could talk about the mural ordinances, which he was also a part of with the heart of High Springs. We have seen continued conflicts of interest with this law firm. Uh, my suggestion is that we consider looking at a totally different firm. I was in a building planning meeting where over 100 people were there and Mr. Walker instructed the people in front of the room that these people, their only opinions, they are not facts. You can't listen to what they have to say. I think you remember that. People got up and walked out of the meeting. Is this the kind of message that we want to put forth to the city folks that he does not represent what, what it sounds like our city wants, our city values, our city look as far as, like I say, with this, with the mural thing, our, our building committee, they put together a plan and that weekend, a mural was put up over the weekend, phone calls were made. And that weekend, a mural was put up over the weekend, phone calls were made.
Thank you. Okay, any other citizen comments? And Angela, we don't vote on this, right? Just a discussion, right? Okay, moving on to a city attorney report and update.
Didn't you say item four?
Item four.
Oh my God, I already forgot about it. So close, yet so far. I put it somewhere. Oh, it's right here, it's right in front of me.
Extension for a pretheater.
The extension for the pretheater, item four.
So with the grant, um, the deadline for it is coming up with the wall testing. And remember the last meeting, you asked for it upstate and the state was reviewing, they're still reviewing. We cannot move forward until the state gives it a final approval. It's been at least, I think at least six weeks it's been sitting there. So we talked with the state and we, Ashley Molden submitted a, um, amendment for an extension. They quickly responded back to December, I think thirty first for the grant. This is unofficial until everybody signs it, but that's the amendment you have in front of you. It's basically extending the grant from June to December.
I'm fine with that.
Oh wow.
We gotta do it, we gotta get it done the right way. If it's, I mean, I know everybody says how fast government is, but...
It's been sitting for, I think, at least six weeks at the state.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, um, Mr. Marshall. Uh, does this mean that with extending the length of the agreement to the end of the year, does, does that also infer that the work that would be covered under that grant would be finished as well?
Everything, everything with the grant will be done by the end of the year.
Okay, okay. I'm just worried we're coming into the rainy season and we've still got that roof on there, so...
Tell you, Ashley Molden is beyond worried.
I bet.
Now, this is, extension was because of the state or because of us?
Both. We, we, when they got in and they saw the construction of the walls, they had to do additional wall pressure tests. That took longer than anticipated, we needed to get that information for the state. We got it for them, now they're, they're still reviewing it.
Now, how we kinda like handled the issue we were having where, um, cause it took, um, Paul Dressing, that's the guy, right?
Paul Dressing.
Yep, it took him a long time to do the plans. Now, how we got that issue underway that we won't have this come December thirty first, that nothing is done by then?
No, we're waiting on the state now and they know that. We can't do anything until they approve it. Once they approve it, the bids for the work will go out and they could start the repairs. We're just wait, this is the final step before they can start the real work. It's the state approving the, cause it's the historic building, has to go through a historic process. It takes time.
Now, the wall issue, cause I know there was like an issue with the wall that was un, that we didn't know going into this. Now, has that been solved? Can the roof actually go on the building?
Yep, they came up with a plan. They're gonna, they're gonna shore up the walls, they're gonna put scaffolding up and shore up the walls before they do anything with the roof. Because if they put that, if they work on the roof, the material that the wall is, it could crumble. And we're trying to do it as not only the fastest way, but the right way and the safe way. And, um, but that, that issue has been resolved, we're just waiting for the state and we can start the construction.
Great question.
Do I make a motion that we approve the extension?
Second.
Been moved to second, do we have any citizen comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I'm gonna move right on to city attorney, uh, report and update.
No report.
City manager report and update.
So reminder, I will not be here at the next meeting. I will be in Mexico, but I am bringing a laptop. I got a few meetings that I'm gonna do from the beach in Mexico.
That's a good place to be on from here.
Schedule them all in the morning, so I don't be in tip top shape. The big one, the big meeting, update for the mayor is we got a meeting with the Swanee River District about getting the permits for the dock over at the canoe outpost.
Fantastic.
And scheduled, the only time they were available was when I was in Mexico. So I'm, I'm bringing my laptop and I'm like, as long as I have internet, we'll be at that meeting. If not, Jennifer Appleby can more, she's more equipped to handle that. The last meeting, I talked about an issue with the Wild Spaces Public Places money with the, um, canoe outpost. I talked to the county manager earlier this week and it's scheduled to go on, they were supposed to be on the next commission meeting, they're gonna push it out, cause I won't be here. But we are working with our bond attorney and the county manager and I think we're gonna come out okay on that side. When we first heard twenty, two, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that was a hard pill. They didn't realize the way we funded it, there was some financing, there's a lot of moving parts in that that the county wasn't aware of or that they weren't aware of. So, we're gonna be sitting down with the attorneys and hushing it out. And I think we're gonna, I don't anticipate it's gonna be anywhere near as bad as we originally thought. But I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on that. Reminder, the BMX event is this weekend, um, so increased traffic, good time. I, I'm actually gonna go and watch it for a little bit. The next meeting, you will have two special magistrate bids to decide on.
Ooh, nice.
Chief Shepherd and, uh, Jeffrey Donaldson with Coats. They're very excited, cause we have a caseload building. Reminder, especially for the mayor, Atletico League of Cities meeting, you have the RSVP by April eighteenth. Just get a whole mashly, anybody plans on attending that? It will be in Archer Tuesday, April twenty second at six thirty. Need you to consider agenda items that you would like to be on the agenda for the joint meeting with the county. Mayor Runder and I will have a meeting coming up to help set that agenda. And we can't, I, I can't advocate for anything if I don't know what your priorities are for that meeting. Lastly, uh, youth council, they have, they're offering free tutoring. Listen, some of those kids were in that audience today and they're infinitely smarter than I am. And they're offering free tutoring, it's on that flyer, I think it's April twenty first at the Douglas Center. Is that's April twenty first, someone?
Mm-hmm.
It's okay.
Yeah.
I believe it's April twenty first. They offer free tutoring, we did it last time, we didn't have any kids show up. So we're trying to get the word out a little bit better, because this youth council put a lot of time and effort and thought process behind it. And I'd like to see some youth get some counseling, especially for state testing. And that is all I have. And I didn't have my mic on, I am sorry for the audience, I didn't have my mic on.
Still doesn't. Oh, it's just too easy.
My fault.
He said a lot of good stuff though, everybody. A lot of good positive things. He's going to Mexico, he said he's gonna drink the water, it's gonna be fantastic. Be a lot of fun. Yes, right. Mr. Bledsoe, on to you, sir.
Yes, I wanna recognize Chief Peters in the fire department today. They responded to my mom today at home, she was having some issues and she was transported. And Chief Peters was awesome with her. I appreciate y'all doing what you did. Of course, same way with, with Chief, uh, Antoine. They're all good with my parents, so it's all good. I appreciate everyone of y'all, thank you.
Hope she's all right.
Yeah, she's doing good.
Good, 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 thank God.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to discuss with the attorney the possibility of sending a letter to the city of Atletico, um, requesting affected party status for a piece of land in the Timoca Hills development that they're going to be discussing on April fifteenth. It's on the southwest corner of I seventy five and four forty one. And it is directly connected to the cross county fracture and part of the Hornsby Springs, uh, Hornsby Springs shed. They're talking about putting in an executive golf course there. And there are, as I recall from looking at the plans, there are wetlands that they're going to be building the golf course around. And as with the Mill Creek sink development, it gives me a lot of concern with respect to the impact it would have on our springs and our drinking water here. I think the county is also claiming affected party status on that one as well. And I was just wondering if we could do that as well, if the commission is agreeable to that. Sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I wish I knew more about it. Is it the, the?
On the southwest corner?
Tower Hill?
Yeah.
That's there, that piece right there?
Yeah.
Four forty one, seventy five, where they're old, what was that, that, um, it was like a, a farm, right?
It was a farm.
With all the white?
It was a farm.
Four board fence going up?
But that, that, what they're gonna be discussing on the fifteenth is right over the cross county fracture. So the, the ability for, you know, the pesticides, herbicides and all those things they use on our golf course to go right to the, to the drinking water supply.
That's a bad spot right there.
It is, um, you know, there are some parts in that area, they're not as bad. But the, the Mill Creek sink is another one. But this one is just one that I have some concerns about. Cause, you know, down gradient of, of all the development that they're doing is all of our drinking water, whether it's municipal or a private well, it's everybody, um, so...
I do in the affected party, just clarify that up for me. We're just saying that we have a stake in this and that we would like a say.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And this would be separate from the Mill Creek one that we've already? How is that moving along? Do we know anything with that? Are you aware of any progression on that?
As I, as far as I understand, I'm, I'm hearing that they're trying to schedule the quasi judicial hearings on that. There appears to be a lot of controversy, as, as you well know. So not only with the hearing, but the scheduling of the hearing and that sort of thing. So, uh, I'll try to look into that and see where we're at with it further.
Good deal, I'm, I'm okay with doing what you're asking.
Nothing wrong with having a say at the table.
Obviously, I'm okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I'm fine.
I thought we were gonna make a motion, so I was just like, yeah.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, sir, that we, we please, um, send a letter to the city of Atletico claiming affected party status for the Timoca Hills development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, anything from the audience? We got a thumbs up, I'll take that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. I don't know, I, I don't think you can vote against water.
A little extra vote there, I know, I know.
I don't think you can vote against drinking water.
And I hate getting into another municipality's business. I, I don't like trying to, to do that. But, um, the only other thing I had, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Marshall, is I wanted to give a shout out to the very lovely April downstairs. We recently bought a car for, for our youngest. And we're working on transferring the tag and the title and the place that we bought it from said, "Well, that's gonna be X number of dollars." And my husband, "Wait a minute." And he called down to the city of High Springs, nobody knew who it was calling. They put him through to April and he gave her the information, she goes, "It'll be half that." So she gave him information, she was incredibly responsive and supportive and he was able to go back and say, "No, no problem, you don't need to do that, I'll get it done somewhere else." And they, they did it for the price that April said it would actually cost. So I want to thank her for being a rock star.
All right, I got a few things tonight. Um, this Saturday at twelve PM to three PM, the grand opening of Anytime Fitness. So everybody come out and get fit. Um, I got a question, did we ever look into impact fees study? I remember we talked about it, um, Catherine brought it up about how Newberry's impact fees were more than ours. Did we ever look at that? Cause I know budget is coming up.
Part of the, part of the budget, Diane and I have talked about the budget process and we have talked about impact fees. Have we done, have we raised them or anything like that? We haven't, when we get through the budget process, we will have a proposal for what your impact fees will be.
All right, okay, did we ever get our revenue back from the mess up with the meters at Oak Ridge?
No, we have a meeting, I believe it's next week with the consultant for that. They are gonna come bring us some remedies and solutions. I can bring that as an update on our, my, Diane can give an update as her city manager report at the next meeting.
Okay. Um, the Children Trust reached out to me, they were looking for a space to start a family resource center. They were supposed to have a meeting, but it was council when they were on the way over here.
Who's that?
The Children Trust.
No, I met with them.
Yeah, they were saying that they were looking for a family resource center, but then when... So at first, they were saying that the Springs room, I mean, I, what is it called? The bigger room might have been available, but then when they were supposed to have their second meter, they said that it was no room available.
No, they wanted the Douglas Center. And they asked us to provide the Douglas Center Monday through Friday from eight to five at no cost to... And then I told them, with all the money we just spent remodeling the Douglas Center and it gets used by the community, I can't obligate, obligate that building to them. Never talked about the Santa Fe building, but if they wanna meet again and talk about the Santa Fe building, that may be a good, good spot for them.
All right, so I emailed them back, um...
You're gonna take care of that then?
I mean, you can email them, but yeah, that, I, they just said that they talked about the Santa Fe room, but then the Santa Fe room wasn't available. And then they said they gave the option to Douglas Center after the Santa Fe room wasn't available. But that's neither here nor there. How, um, have we came up with an option for the Garden Club and the other organizations that don't have a building?
We talked to the Garden Club and we offered them, there's a empty room at the canoe outpost for a temporary. They said they have a spot for their next meeting and then they don't meet for a while. The contract, we got contacted by the contractor, they went out, I think it was this week, to evaluate the, the building. And we will hear what, what their plan is for that building. I don't think it's salvageable, but we'll see. Somebody smarter than me about engineering will make that decision. And, um, if not, we've already told the Garden Club and, uh, we already worked something out with the Boy Scouts that we would always have a spot for them. We're not gonna, they're, they do great things to the community and whatnot, so we're gonna find a spot for them. It's just, they don't need one right now, they don't meet.
Okay, and what about?
AA?
No, what is it, Catholic Charities?
Catholic Charities, they got their insurance in and, um, they're, they're good where they're at right now. And you just gotta decide what you wanna do with that building before it deteriorates more.
Gotcha. Um, our employee of the week this week is Jennifer Affaby.
Rock star.
She's been hitting the ground running ever since she got hired and she still has not stopped. So she is our employee of the week.
I'm, you know, I'll piggyback off that with Jennifer, she does the little things too. When nobody's looking, she's always out there. I was out there playing pickleball the other night and it was just getting a little dark and I didn't know where somebody pulls up, she hops out, it's her, I said, "Good Lord, can you go home? Relax a little bit." She said, "Nope, turn the lights on, jump back in the car." And I'm assuming went, started heading back toward the canoe outpost, I'm sure to work more. So she is just, I mean, I mean, second to none. We have been blessed and blessed and blessed with our staff in High Springs, so that's fantastic. I mean, they're all, they're always great when you bring them up, but yeah, just fantastic.